Roll them, roll them, roll them. This budget workshop will come to order. Tell the whip and leaders and the county leaders.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Kirby?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for allowing us to have this workshop. Mr. Williams requested a countywide update as it relates to utilities in our last meetings. We'll start with that. So that's why we are installing two or three meters per month. This is growing. We did recently upgrade the chlorine pumps. Plant, the water plant averages about eighty thousand gallons a day. Ellisville and Fort White Water Lines were expected to go out in eighteen twenty-three. We have done unloadments. We pre-purchased materials for obvious reasons, actually, et cetera. The hydrant tank had been scheduled capital upgrade replacement per inspection report. So next Thursday, we're going to do a capital update plan upcoming this year. That will be one of the issues you will see. Now, the Ellisville wastewater treatment plant is averaging twenty-three five hundred, twenty-three thousand five hundred gallons per day. So if you recall, a few weeks ago, we talked about twenty-five to fifty to seventy-five. That's why that's true. Twenty-three five days, twenty-five thousand gallon capacity. The second phase of the treatment facility for a wastewater stream should start construction. This is your fifty thousand gallon in November per contract. Once we're complete, the original plant will be upgraded to meet the new specs. Move forward to the third phase, which will give you seventy-five thousand. That's going good. We upgraded the blower valves at the water treatment plant, which is wastewater, I'm sorry, which stabilized the air intrusion for better performance. Drain fields work clean and the ponds are back on rotation. Water treatment plant is averaging about one hundred and five thousand gallons a day. We did complete our well repair. So now we're back at service with well number two. So out of the industrial part, the C Mar, the construction manager at risk has been chosen. Process for building a wastewater treatment plant should begin within the next five days for Workman Smith, subject to board approval later today. So at the next meeting, you'll see an agreement, staff negotiated with Workman Smith, about forty-eight thousand dollars to ensure we do not have a problem with the lake city like we did the jail project. The water situation is more subjective. Staff has got to find a location for a well that should supply good water. The county has also discussed with the city of Lake City about the supply of water. So that concludes where you're at, countywide utilities and updates. So we're growing. Mr. Kraus and I were in the budget process yesterday with Mr. Powell. We saw some really good numbers in comparison to what was last year and what we foresee coming up to the next year. So we are in the utility business. Before I start this, that's a big word. We are in the utility business. Okay? Before we get into the slides, I think it owes a little conversation. Out at our intermodal park, the city has been very gracious and offered us a deal on the table as it relates to help Port Russ with water. Obviously, as we shop for customers, that's a very important step. We have got a water use permit for a tad over two million gallons per day. We went and drilled two test wells. Both of our test wells were probably bad. That puts us in a position to go further to the east where our hydrologists and engineers feel very comfortable we do not have a situation that we have at the other two test wells. The city has wells capable of helping play me county. I'll get into the slides in just a moment. They're basically saying, look, we'll work with you guys, hook onto our wells, do your supply, we'll utilize your wok, we'll loan you, the county will loan the wok, basically sell our water under our wok back to us at ten percent above operating cost. So there's a lot of scenarios to look here. We're in the utility business. In my opinion, we sometimes focus too much on the intermodal park itself. We're in the countywide utility. It's been brought to my attention as an authority, there's a possibility of even joining other counties, such as Fort White we did. There's even a possibility of adjoining other counties. There's some needs in the nearby vicinity, so I'm hearing, that water might be needed with one of our neighboring counties. So I'm not requesting a vote on this today. What I am requesting is consensus by the board to ensure that David and I are going the direction that this board so desires, and I'll explain. We drilled two test wells. That costs money to drill test wells. Before we jumped out and went to the east by about five miles, we want to talk to this board before we spend one more dollar. If we are entertaining, though we're in the utility business, continuing to rely on others, that's not, it is a watch. With that being said, I'll get started with our numbers. I just wanted to paint the whole picture of where are we going in the future? And to me, it's much more about the intermodal park, it's about countywide. Okay? Even outside the county. So, on the county side, to drill the well to the east, four point nine four seven million dollars. Going to bump into some wetlands, eleven thousand, subsurface utility engineering at five thousand, surveying eleven thousand, design permit bid seven hundred and forty thousand, so roughly a five point seven billion dollar profit. The city, remember, they've got a plant, takes their well to their plant, and it's helped us take it from there, two million plus, wetlands at six thousand, engineer to three, surveying at six, design bid assistance, three hundred, or a two point three million dollar profit. So initially, city versus county, three point three six three million dollars. Wok, two point one six million gallons per day. We talked this one a minute yesterday, okay? Can we utilize our wok and do this with the city? They said probably. A lot of hoops, I'll quote, "A lot of hoops, boxes of check, but you probably can do it." Nothing in writing. Once again, today, I'm looking for consensus. The city has proposed a call of one dollar, one six seven five for one thousand gallons. Based on one point five billion gallons per day, this is an example, the cost of using the city for five orders would be nineteen hundred dollars and change. The county would charge forty-six thirty-five for one point five. That's just an arbitrary number, that's an example of a number, right? Based on our curve, which is three dollars, nine cent per thou. The city's saying we'll sell it to you using our wok at one point one six seven five, but we charge three dollars a thou. So based on one point five billion gallons per day, daily profit using this methodology, twenty-seven hundred dollars. Okay? City, in two point three five three, it would take the county selling seven hundred sixty-one four eighty-eight seven six three, six seven three gallons, pay the city water investment using the current rate. So it would take seven hundred plus thousand gallons or to pay off one thousand gallons. On the county side, one point eight four billion with a B, okay? It's just basic math. You're basically two point three, five point seven, therefore, seven sixty-one, eighteen forty, in a solid proportion. It's a double the cost of investment, therefore, it's double the water, okay? Now, I think that's where we're at. David and I made a cautious decision before we go out to the east, once we found these numbers out. Let's talk to the board. And board, where do y'all see this utility direction going? Mr. Chairman, on that, I'd send you any questions.
Mr. Kirby, explain to me the arsenic situation that if we go with the city's way, and, you know, you look at the numbers and it's very tempting to do that. What, what is the situation with arsenic? They have arsenic, no arsenic in our wells. We did when we did some close a mile away, but they don't have arsenic, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
At this point in time? But it, is, is that, what causes, I'm not a hydrologist, so if we start pumping water out of there, if they let us sell us that water, that's going to be a pretty big rise. I don't know how much they pump out of there a day now, but is that, is there something, you were mentioning something about arsenic could come into those wells? So what, what happens then? Like what?
Sure. And for record, I'm not a hydrologist. This is what they've, the hydrologists and engineers have educated me on this. We drilled the first well basically by the prison at unacceptable levels of arsenic getting. Now, for the record, arsenic can be treated, okay? I think arsenic, so I've been educated, it's fairly close to the city's wells today. That well also had unacceptable levels of arsenic. Once again, it can be treated, very costly to be treated. And that's why, before I go any further, that's why I don't need a solid vote on this today, I need consensus, because there are some unknowns. That's what prompted us to go due east, because all of the hydrologists, all the engineers say if you get up there to the east, the way the water flows underground and whatnot, they've got a ninety-nine point nine percent chance that puts you out of the arsenic problem. Now, what they're also telling me, if we start pulling vast amounts of water out of this two point three million dollar investment that we're discussing.
Talking about on the city's way?
The city's, yes, the city's well, though they have acceptable or any, they're in good shape for this arsenic today. Our hydrologists and engineers are telling me it's not if, it's when the arsenic appears because of the volume of water we're looking, okay? That's why this gets complicated. If you first look at it, it's a no-brainer, in my opinion. Then the more you dig at it, do we want to spend two point three million dollars, right? Because nobody wants to do that service. Do we want to spend two point three million dollars not only for that arsenic to become a problem for us, but for the customer and the city themselves? Right? So that's where this becomes such a double-edged sword, that you bite the bullet, spend five million dollars, and you're done with it. And why is it five million dollars? You gotta go four and a half thousand each. But that is your double-edged sword. Do you go ahead and spend the money upfront, or are you running the gamble with everything we're talking about?
Go ahead, Rock.
Mr. Kirby, though, you talk about you spending that extra money, but you're also opening up more areas for opportunity for economic development, because at some point, we might have to run that pipe that way anyway. So.
Commissioner Ford, I'll let go. You've been pushing for a long time to open this utility business up to a much larger scale. We've now learned through our excellent staff of designers, he's great with those guys, he's educated us on what other folks are just not staying in their county, they're teaming up with other counties, right? They're helping each other on the economic development side. It's growing. The utility authorities are becoming prevalent. It's, it's a good plan, and I think that, once again, Mr. Chairman, if muddies up the water, you cannot look at just these numbers depending upon the way this board chooses to go. If we're sure enough going to expand it to the utility business, it seems like it's a lot of money, but isn't. You're investing money to get a return. The flip side of that is, if we're simply discussing it in a motor park, assuming there's no arsenic problem, but, but it is, but there, that, those factors are in there.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
In addition, the two point one consumptive use from it could just be the beginning. The actual build-out of the park is a much higher number of water that would be needed to be consumed.
So, so that scared me a little bit for the future, if we get, where we're pumping a whole lot more water, can, can the city well handle it without getting arsenic? I, I want to know, if arsenic, let's just say we pump for, we go the city way and we pump for two years and all of a sudden arsenic shows up. Now, what would be the cost to tri, is there somebody that's done anything on what would be the cost for us? Because the city don't want arsenic, I know they don't want arsenic in their water. If we cause their water to have arsenic because we go that direction, what is the cost per gallon? Or it, it has to be somebody that knows what it costs. Let's just say that happened, arsenic hits it, and we have to clean it up, and the city has to clean theirs up because we've messed up their water, really. What, what is that cost? Is there a cost associated?
I told you earlier, we drilled a second test well. The cost, the first test well did have levels that were unacceptable. The cost at that time, the first level, well, was at the limit of prohibited, prohibited that we went to drill a second well. It's a perpetual cost that goes on and on and on, and it's not affordable.
It's not affordable at all, then?
That's why we continue to drill the wells.
So what I'm saying, if we, if the city, if we, if we go by their way, by their wells and something happens, you know, use their water, and they get arsenic, it's prohibitive for even them, I mean, it's just so expensive.
I can't speak for another entity, but obviously, they're doing this for ten percent above their cost of giving us water. That's business law. And they're willing, contractually, to continue that at a ten percent business rate, right? Now, common sense tells us, if they have to go in there and start treating for arsenic, that number goes up there, and I know.
Has to, has to.
That is the.
So our engineers did look at the issue of what would you do if you came across arsenic and how you would treat for it. It's a completely different treatment process than the current city uses or one that we use, and it has to be maintained, has to be refurbished, it's an ongoing, it's an ongoing thing, it's not just a one-time fix. And the engineers are here if you'd like to talk to them.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, go ahead.
If, if you look at everything we've done to this point, I mean, even to the, even to us getting our own cup, it was always for us to go on our own. The, the state has given us all these grants to do this because the state believes we should go on our own. And if you look at the direction our utility committee is going, we're going towards a regional, a regional utility. And I can tell you, I know Union County is interested in working with us in some of their areas. I know that. And, and now with, you know, we've heard rumors of Baker County maybe, but there's, there's opportunity for this thing. I would hate to, in the short term, save three million dollars and cost us way more ten years from now because we did not look out for what's for the whole county and not just for one side. And, I mean, we've been very fortunate, we haven't spent any taxpayer money out there, the, the state believes in our project out there, and we're getting grants. I, I think we're in a, we're in a positive climate for that to continue to happen. And, and especially going with the global regional utility approach, I think you're in a real positive opportunity for that to happen. So, you know, this expense may never fall directly on the taxpayers of Columbia County. This may be something we get grants for, and, and it benefits not just Columbia County, but our whole region. And I think we've got to think more globally. We, we always tie our hands because we think, you know, we do stuff to save money today, and, and then we get in trouble ten years later because we should have done it a different way. And I don't want to look back ten years and say, well, you know, we saved three million dollars in, but, you know, it's costing us the world, world more now because we went that route, so.
Mr. Williams?
Kevin, out of all the conversations that I've known so far, the one thing that sticks in, in my mind, that really stands out to me here, when you say it's not if, it's when.
You are correct, Commissioner Williams. So I've been educated by our hydrologists and our engineers. They said it is not if, it's when we will have an arsenic problem, when we hit a certain volume, and obviously, that's our intent, we're not allowed to pump five gallons a day. You are correct.
Attention on what we're talking about with the commissioner Whit. During our research, we have learned that it's not uncommon for multiple counties and cities to work together on a utility. You open up other opportunities for grant money, and I, I just think we'd be tying our hands on future projects if we went that route. And I, at this time, I think we need to look at the bigger picture.
And once again, Commissioner Ford, board, David and I made a cautious decision before we went to the third well and expended monies, taking a look at it, which they're almost guaranteeing us we're good to go because of the geography they lay it. We wanted to talk to this board and put our options on the table. That way, everybody's on the same page. That is what we're going to do.
I want to ask a question. How accurate is that? Is that ninety-nine point nine percent, or is it sixty-five percent?
Mr. Chairman, I've been told it's ninety-nine percent. You're talking about going east?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
So, so this is what kind of scares me. We go over there and we get, we find out we got arsenic at the city well. And then we're going to pump more and more, once Meg Industrial Park starts building, we might have to go and do the other well anyhow, once our cup goes up, because, you know.
That, that's why I made the comment, if you invest two and a half million dollars, right? All that stores, if you look at it, you can save three million a day, you risk losing two and a half plus ongoing arsenic problem. And that is yours. And then you, you've got a, what commissioner Whit indicated, you've got to take into play, what is our big picture? What is our indicator, right? Are we going to be in the utility business on a grand scheme of things? Or are we simply going to clean Fort White up, have water in Ellisville, and have water in a motor park? That's the hundred-dollar question. If you're going to go wider with the utility business, you need to go county's option. If you're going to keep yourself at Ellisville, clean Fort White up, stay in a motor park, I think that's a kind of a no-brainer. I would compare it to by the law, okay? If you're going to move a half acre dirt, that's all you know you're going to do, you probably better off forming that out. But if I'm going to do a hundred acre a week, I'm going to go by my own track.
Who, who can give us a little more input, hydrologists? Who?
Well.
I just want to hear, kind of back him up on this, because I know he's not a hydrologist. Come up here, come up here. And I want to know what school y'all go to to learn how to be a hydrologist?
Or not. Commissioner, my name is Scott Silver. I'm a geologist with Jim Sideman Associates and working with the Department of Professional Services, and we've worked on this project for a couple of years now. Some of the background on the site was that, you know, the initial plan was we had a wide-open property where we could design at our convenience where to place the wells and our treatment center at the most cost-efficient, cost-efficient place. And that's where we started. And to our surprise, when we drilled that well, we identified an arsenic level that was, as mentioned, cost prohibitive against treatment. It can be treated, but the long-term, continuous process just did not make it effective. So the simple step was, let's move to the west and see if we can move away from the arsenic source. There's an assumption being made, and it's not proven yet, and that is that through the process of the geothermal cooling at the prison system, they're creating an environment underground that is liberating naturally occurring arsenic and causing it to move in the groundwater. It's not that they're introducing arsenic, it's just that they're changing the conditions there. And again, this is not proven, it's just suspected because of the nature of the arsenic that's present, the geothermal system there, and where we are. And that, I mean, that test well was immediately down gradient from the prison system in our positioning in terms of the way the groundwater moves there. So there's an assumption being made there that isn't proven, but makes good sense from the understanding of how arsenic moves the groundwater. Moving to the west, we moved out of that downgraded plume movement, and we did again find arsenic at ten times a lower rate, like a concentration of arsenic, but it was still present there at a level that would require treatment if the, if the treatment system was put in place, it would have to again be maintained. So the Lake City wells, and to give some, in terms of the Lake City well placement, they are further to the west, less likely to have impacts from the arsenic, but unknown right now what the rate of transport is and how that arsenic plume would be, would be impacted. So I don't want to get too far in the weeds there, but say, we're within three quarters of a mile, our current test well and the Lake City wells. And so if there were increased drawdown on those wells, there would certainly be pressure in that direction that could draw that arsenic in that direction, and so we don't want to move forward thinking it would not be an issue. There would definitely be pressure on that plume to move in that direction with the avenue flow. The idea of moving to the east would be that we're moving not only further away from the geothermal system of the prison system, but also up gradient in the Florida aquifer, meaning the water would have to move backwards to reach where we would plant and install that well, or putting it as far on the available property as we can, away from the prison system to avoid that activity. Again, this is, you know, we're assuming that it is the geothermal system of the prison system that's causing this release. It's just based on other likely sources, which are not, to our knowledge. So I can respond to questions there, I may be beandering a little bit.
So what does the geo explain that? What, how do they create that? What are they doing to, if they are?
Yes, sir. So the arsenic being naturally present in its natural state is in a reduced, not dissolved arsenic state. And when the, when a geothermal system extracts water, it is just naturally occurring groundwater, they're using that for its temperature to regulate the temperature throughout the building, and then they pump that groundwater back into the earth. And I've actually, that's not entirely true. They pump it out, and then allow the groundwater to cascade back in, natural reclaim, back into the aquifer. And it's that cascading action that allows air, oxygen-rich air, to be entrapped into the water. So you're taking a reduced insoluble arsenic, and you're introducing oxygen. And oxygen, as we know, with iron causes rust. In this case, it's changing arsenic to a liberated form in the groundwater. Similar to the oxidation of iron to rust, its oxygen is interacting with arsenic and making it a more reactive exchange of water soluble form.
Go ahead, Rock.
So basically, you're saying this natural flow of this water is to the west, underground of the aquifer?
Yes, sir. Northeast to southwest.
So therefore, this arsenic is, is eventually going to make it to that, going, moving west also. You know it's at a higher level further east of the site that we, the last, when we drilled, you said ten times greater arsenic was at that site. So basically, it's, it's making its way west right now, is what you're saying?
Correct. We, what we know is that we anticipated moving laterally would take us out of the plume, and it did not.
So how far did you move from the first well to the second well?
About, yeah.
Approximately, I, I think.
About a mile and a half, about a mile and a half.
Because you moved a mile and a half, and it still had problems. And then the city's well is three quarters of a mile from that one.
Another three quarters, yes, sir.
So a mile and a half, it went down from really bad arsenic, ten, ten, whatever you said, ten times as much as.
Ten times reduction.
Oh, ten times reduction.
So. It's still too high.
And the assumption is, on the movement of, on the flow of the plume, everything's running naturally downstream, is what you're saying, correct?
And natural movement of that plume, if it's following the contour of the Florida aquifer, as we assume it is, it will move from the northeast to southwest of the plant, and that may keep Lake City and its operations from having any issues at all. But if the increased pumping, we do create a flow, you know, we're pulling water in that direction, and it may have an impact on the plume. So we don't want to say that there won't be, certainly will be an impact on the plume. Will it arrive at the wells? It's, it's not certain.
So where are their wells compared to the one you, are they west, south west, north? Three quarters mile west? West?
Yes, sir, purely west. West, southwest, so.
So they're in the, when you say, now, if they were north, it wouldn't have as much problem, but they're west, southwest, the same direction?
That the plume would go if it was going to go?
Yes, sir, that's right.
So the, I mean, I, I realize it's just a, it's a, it's a game right now, just determining where, where your good and your bad is. The state of Florida, assume, we're assuming that they're the ones generating this problem here. So what is, is there a remedy on their side to what they can do different in their operation to possibly? Because even if we move to the Baker County line, you know, if they don't change their practice, it seems as though that to me, you know, your, your, your last test well was three quarters of a mile from the city's wells, I, I, I'm concerned for the city's quality of water also, if, if what you're saying is. If, if what you're saying is even, you know, remotely accurate, and I'm sure it is, but, I mean, you know, so this is a bigger problem than just the North Florida Mega Industrial site, you know? So i- am I, am I looking at this thing right? I mean, so what you're.
What you're saying is correct.
So.
This contaminant is, and they are, they are in the process of investigating it, as I understand, they hired a consultant, and they're working with Department of Environmental Protection.
So in all this here, y'all have made them aware that we assume, we, this could be a problem on your end.
Yes, sir. Department of Corrections, Department of Environmental Protection are all very much informed on this case.
But, but we've got to base our decision on the information we have at the time. And we don't know when or when, or if they're going to, when that's gonna happen if it's going. And, I mean, to me, based on the information we have right now, I could not go along with the fact that making a chance on the increased flow of the city's wells, creating a problem for, for them either.
I understand your concern.
It almost tells you for sure, Rocky and, and all y'all, that it's coming. And, and just the fact that the second well was ten times less than the first well, it's gotta be in the flow, because it's a little less, cuz it ain't, it hadn't been pumped a lot, and it was just a well. I, I wonder what would happen if we started pumping three million in that well, if the arsenic would've went up? I'm assuming it would. But you went a mile and a quarter and got ten times less, and it's only three quarter to the wells that we're talking about working with, that, that's half as, you know, that kinda scares me a little bit.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I think it's, you know, you can, you can do it right from the start, and you can pay later, and, you know, we, we've all, I, I've got one going on right now. I got a road in my district that should've been fixed and paved sixteen years ago, and it wasn't. And, and, and today, that road is three times the cost of what it would've been back then. So not only the long term, you, you got a short term cost savings to me, that in the long term, it's gonna cost you more money. And then you've also got a safety concerns to our taxpayers in the city who are also county taxpayers, if you go that route and you create this problem for them. So that, that one right there's a, a loan is enough for me to say, let's continue down our own path. But there, to me, there are a half dozen reasons to, to take our cup that the state gave us to go our own way and keep going our own way.
I mean, so where it stands today, Kevin, is that, you know, you're looking for direction from us to tell whoever the contractor may be, go do another test well, give us some results, and we'll come back to the table.
The whole purpose of this conversation is, David and I did not feel comfortable spending one more dollar drilling another test well anywhere out there, when the city was gracious enough to put this offer on the table. It sounded great at the beginning, the more we looked at it, the more we dabbled with it, there was a lot of hiccups with it, no, nobody thought. It's just a business deal put on the table. Mr. Murphy, to that point, I'm of the opinion, the biggest question here today, if one question was answered, I think that would give David and I our clear direction. Do we want to continue focusing at Fort White, Ellisville, and the animal park? Or do we want to grow our utility? I think that is the question, irregardless of arsenic, irregardless of anything, do we want to keep moving with the utility? Or are we gonna only focus on the three or four areas I just mentioned?
One more question I wanna ask, which is probably over, overkill. Is there any more wells east of our well that we are pro, might drill? The one that we're talking about drilling east of the site? Is there any other industry or anything that can cause anything like that? Or have there been any wells drilled two miles east of it that have or don't have arsenic? Just a, it's just a question I, you know, to me, I hope there's not another well a mile east that has arsenic in it, so we're, we're just.
Between Department of Corrections, sir, this, excuse me, okay? Between Department of Corrections and the eastern border of the counties, there are no other wells that would be a cause of concern, but also there are no other wells we can test, find, or.
There's nothing east into Baker County either, then?
We could potentially start to search east into Baker County, and I didn't box it, we will be instructed.
You understand what I'm saying? I, I, I just thought maybe that might be, if there's one a mile or two miles east, could we go and get them to let us test that, just to see if there's, you, I'm sure they're hitting because they're using it for whatever they're using it for, but I just, this might be a little overkill, but I'd hate to know that there's another well somebody's got that's pumping arsenic too, and we don't know about it east of it.
The next close as well is at the, uh, Lusty Training Center.
Yeah, the prison.
That DC operates, uh, that's in Baker County, right there on.
Okay.
On western side of, uh, Lusty's. And there are no indication of arsenic that I would.
In their water? Okay. Cause that, that's probably what the county line is, county line road, that's another half a mile, probably three quarters mile to the training center.
But what we're talking about, we're talking about two miles.
Yeah. Oh, y'all, y'all aren't talking about right on the county line, and y'all are coming back. So yeah, you're two miles from that, and I don't have arsenic, so that's a good, okay, that was my question. Mr. Williams?
We, we got to remember why we are in the water business at Ellisville, because of arsenic. In the wells there, in the four inch wells or whatever they had down there in the states, say, guys, you guys got to do something to get rid of the arsenic down there. And that's how we formed our partnership with the state of Florida to go into waters, in the water business down in Ellisville, simply because arsenic was in the water.
If there's no arsenic in a training center, that's two miles away, and if there's no arsenic in all those people's houses to the east of that, I don't, and the prison east of that, I don't, I don't think there'll be an issue.
So I, I, from what I'm hearing, Kevin, I think, apart from, we need a vote on which way we wanna go, I mean.
We on a workshop, we can't vote.
Well, what I'm, what I'm hearing, we give y'all, I think, gentlemen, the board is to, is to drill another well.
Understood. Okay. Gentlemen, I appreciate it. Thank y'all.
Thanks.
Mr. Kraus?
Um, we unfortunately had, um, some illnesses hit the office today, not today, this week, and so, um, we are going to delay the presentation of the floor budget till next Thursday. We're requesting to have a workshop next Thursday where we will present the floor budget, capital projects, and all of the other concerns all at one time.
And on what day?
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday.
John has checked and made sure that the school board is available.
What time?
What date is?
Nine o'clock?
That's the board's call, we were thinking about nine, nine thirty, yes.
He's the one following me. Nine thirty? All right. That's the twenty fifth.
So the goal would be, we would present the floor budget, uh, we would have the constitutional officers make their presentations, we would discuss capital projects. That would then give you time to make comments, changes, adjustments. If necessary, we could have a follow-up workshop the following Tuesday on the, uh, let me pull up the calendar. Thirty.
Thursday at nine o'clock?
Nine thirty.
Twenty fifth.
Nine thirty.
So the twenty fifth at nine thirty in the morning. If necessary, the thirtieth at nine thirty in the morning, because then we would be able to put the final budget in your agenda packet on September second for the adoption hearing on the eighth.
So keep Friday open also, is what you're saying? Or to follow on Thursday?
No, it's following Tuesday.
Thirty, thirty is a, is a Tuesday, and I won't be here Wednesday.
Now, now, now the final adoption will be at, at, at night?
Right, the preliminary adoption is scheduled for the eighth at five thirty PM.
All right, what's on the second?
On the second, the trim notice would not allow us to do the second. We can meet the second.
But we don't need to.
But that would be up to the board.
I, I want, I got adoption appointment that day, and I want, know where I need to change it around.
No, there's no reason to meet the second, because the trim notice says it had to be after the third of the month before you could have your public hearing.
Okay, all right.
So in, to being compliant with trim requirements, we had to move it to the eighth. So again, it's the eighth, and then the final hearing is, I believe, on the twentieth, which is a Tuesday?
Twenty September, right?
Yes. So you're talking about September eighth preliminary hearings, September twentieth final hearings.
September the eighth?
Yes.
And the twentieth.
And September twenty final, those by trim requirements have to be at night, so they'll both be at five thirty in this location. On the eighth.
Five thirty?
Five thirty. So on the eighth also is your hearings, your final hearings on all of your assessments, so you'll have all that as well on the.
So the floor, so the floor budget will be presented for approval on, what's the date then?
We wanna have the work session then, but the actual approval would be the eighth. So we wanna present to you the floor budget next week, so that if you have changes, modifications, things you wanna do differently, we have a week and a half to two weeks to get all that incorporated in time to get it on to you for the hearing on the eighth.
Are we doing this different than we've been doing it?
Yeah.
Uh, it's the same process, it's a little more time compressed because of, uh, you know, the COVID, and then some other things that happened at the office that have just, well, I got COVID earlier.
I'm not talking about, usually when the floor budget is presented, uh, we go right into deliberation then on what's in and what's out.
Yes. Maybe I'm not explaining myself well, and I apologize. Next Thursday at the workshop, we are going to present you the floor budget. Now that gives you a chance to change it, modify it, and whatever, before we get to the first public hearing, which is what we always do. You need time to say, we like this, we don't like this, which capital projects we wanna do, which capital projects we don't wanna do.
Well, I, I understand, but we always, when the floor budget is presented, on the floor budget, that's when we have all the constitutional officers also present their case for their budget also.
Correct, and that's next Thursday.
When that's over with, we got a time for each one of the constitutional officers and other outside agencies to present before the, this board.
Correct, that's next Thursday.
When that's over with, when that's over with, we start deliberation on the budget then, what's in and what's out. That's what we've been doing it.
That's the exact same thing we're doing, and that's next Thursday.
Because when we, we got the new money coming in, we got, oh, what's in the full budget, gonna be permanent in full budget, that number is taken away from the new money coming in. And then we got X amount of dollars, we got to work with then. And then we start divvying up that X amount of money.
Exactly, that's what we're doing next Thursday.
And you're gonna do it all, uh, in defense of what Ron's saying, you're gonna, you're expecting us to do this all of them that one day?
Well, you also, if you need more time.
Yeah, yeah.
If you need more time, that's why we have the next week as well, that, that hearing on next week.
We've been doing it, we've been doing it one day to do that.
Right. So we set it all up so that you'll do all of that next Thursday. If for some reason we need to have another meeting, you've got that already booked in this room the following Tuesday, so that by the end of that second week, we can publish it in the agenda for the hearing, the public hearing, which is on the eighth.
Got a question. Those capital projects that were funded last year, I think it may be three of them, the, the amount that we budgeted for them wasn't enough to complete the project?
Correct.
Or are those gonna be in the flow budget with the additional dollars to make those projects whole?
When Kevin presents the capital projects, they will be in the, I call it the red zone, the projects that, these are the ones you've approved, but we ran out of money, we need to finish funding to get this moving forward.
That's what I'm saying, are those gonna be in the flow budget?
Yes.
This project was funded at, at twenty dollars and needed twenty-five dollars to, to, to uh, complete it, that's in the flow budget.
So you will have the chance to look at it and approve it or not approve it, but it is there, it will be there, yes. Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Williams, we broke it up into four categories as it relates to capital project. What he's referring to as the red zone, we had a few things pop up that we didn't see coming that we have to do. One is the south side recreation of the park. Twenty plus years ago upon, was not constructed, and based on the study to construct the parking lot, permitting, water management, whatnot, it come to our understanding, this was an old problem that never got addressed. Have to spend roughly a quarter of a million dollars to build that pond, okay? You're gonna hear Kevin Kirby and David Kraus request permission, even though that's a have to project, to minimize mobilizations, maintenance, traffic, contractual obligations, the south side parking lot's very important. You have to build a pond for that parking lot. So you're gonna hear, though this is a have to project, this one pond, let's go ahead and capture these other two pond, parking lot project as a sort of have to project, because one is a have to project. You got your.
I understand that, Kevin. All I, all I, I want to know, the projects that were, capital project that was funded last year, they did not have enough funding to, 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 to start them, are those projects gonna be in the flow budget at a hundred percent funded?
So to make a long story, right now, the way it's set up, there's four categories, have to, grant funded projects, what you're referring to, rollover projects, and then a wish list project. I don't know how else to say the fourth category, okay? The third category is what you're referring to. I think there's two ways you could tackle it. David and I talked about this. You've got your rollover, what I call, what you're talking about, projects that cannot be done this year because of funding, right? Do you want to consider what I call have to projects that we didn't see coming, because there's four, five of them, worth a lot of money? Do you, and there's some, some things on the utility side, the station's brought to attention that in my opinion are have to projects, right? And there's a lot of money that if you would've asked me six months ago, I didn't know anything about, nobody did. So I think that is the dollar question. If you go ahead and build in the budget now, what Mr. Williams is talking about, that could be problematic on what I call have to projects. That is your problem.
Okay. Any more questions or comments?
And I'm sure David, and this is too full for you and Kevin both, but the emphasis that Kevin DOT, I'm sorry, the emphasis that Kevin DOT, uh, brought to us last year on the improvement, Kevin, on Baskin Norris there, uh, I would just ask, and, and I, I feel like the commissary would probably support it, you know, we, that, we need to use that as a priority. That road is falling apart by the day. And we allocated, how much was it last year, Kevin? Five hundred, right?
We're doing five hundred thousand for four years.
Okay.
And that is pretty much built into the budget.
And, and that's great. I just wanted to emphasize that, cuz I know we all decided the, you know, last year to, to make that a priority, you know, being though it's, you know, it's one of them roads that support the whole living county.
We captured that, yes.
Great deal, good deal.
Uh, one other thing, are you, are staff addressing the shortfall or the anticipated increase in mowing? Is that gonna be in the flow budget? So that money is set there in the flow budget for roadside mowing? I, I don't want, I don't wanna get up there and say, well, 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 guys, uh, uh, we got to deal with roadside, uh, mowing, staff should put that amount in the flow budget. Guys, we got this amount of money in the flow budget for mowing. And then if this board feel like we need to add more, take some away, we do that. But don't let us be the one to have to say, well, we need to add ten dollars a mowing. You already added that in the flow budget. Does that make sense?
I got, it makes good sense, Ron, and they're smiling because I know they're fixing to say, oh my God, we gotta work overtime tomorrow. Yeah, but I, I agree with you, Ron. Let's go ahead and put it in the floor budget, and then we can work plus or minus.
So how much you wanna put in there? Four million?
That's what I'm smiling about.
What I'm smiling about, you're gonna go five million?
I mean, we will have a number for mowing. You may decide you want it greater, you may decide you want it less, but there will be a, a number in there for mowing.
And, 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 and one moment, I, I quit. Your recommendation on what we need to do with, 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 with the minimum wage, you know, we put that two points on a million dollar there last year, if you're gonna put two point million dollar there, put it in the flow budget, don't, and let this board say, well, that's not enough, it's too much. But be aggressive and put what you need to put in the flow budget, and then that give us an idea of what money we got to play with.
Mm-hmm.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yes, we've run these salary projections where we think it should be, and that will be in the budget. And it will include, uh, again, funding to get to the fifteen dollars an hour and all of that.
Ten four. It's, it's fun trying to satisfy five people.
I just, I, I, I don't think it, I don't think it matters either way, it's gonna follow on us either way.
Yeah, exactly.
All right.
You can't even back up to us.
Are we done, fellas? Or anything y'all wanna talk about? Y'all wanna? Y'all want to bash Kirby and David and what?
Well, and as usual, we took a very conservative approach to estimating revenues. So it's not, we're pretty confident in the revenue numbers because we took a very conservative approach.
I'm, I'm a little surprised at, at the amount of money in the new growth. I, I thought it was going to be a lot more than what it is. And that's a game changer right there. It's not near as much as we thought it might would be.
I agree.
Huh?
I said, I agree.
Any more comments or questions? The motion for adjournment.
We're adjourned.
Adjourned.